Let's raise your flag, the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. Like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the correspondence in the read file?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public forum time, if there's anyone here who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, this would be the time to do it. Approval of meeting minutes, open session, January 18th, 2022, zero motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, January 25th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Open session, January 31st, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the open session on February 1st, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now it gives me great pleasure to turn it over to Lincoln, who's going to announce Plymouth County Commissioners Care Act presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know, I see two Plymouth County Commissioners here. We very much appreciate their presence. I know the county and the Commissioners, together with Treasurer Tom O'Brien, for many months now, let's see, a year and a half, a little more than a year and a half, have been, almost two, yep, have been distributing monies to us from the federal CARES Act and through the county. We're very appreciative of all of that. The funds have gone to a myriad of things in Whitman and have really helped a lot. Included in that is, you know, more than a million dollars towards the regional school district, monies towards South Shore Vote Tech, actually WHCA as well, Whitman Hansen Community Access. We've purchased a new ambulance to directly assist folks who, citizens, residents who have been afflicted with COVID-19. We've done vaccination clinics, distributed masks, distributed test kits. So it's really been a huge help. And I know the Commissioners wanted to present the check to us for further applications that have been approved by the county. But again, thank you very much.
Sure, please do. I'm sorry, we should have asked.
That's all right.
We're one of the few politicians that do what we're told.
Sometimes.
Or as instructed, yeah, sometimes.
Sometimes. Well, I first want to start off, I thank you very much for having us here this evening. The CARES Act program has been a total success and we're so happy that we've been able to manage the program. As I think it's just about two years ago come March that we first started this. And as everybody knows, when we first started it, it was not very popular for us to manage it. But in doing so, we certainly have done it at a much cheaper rate and faster than any of the other entities could have done. I also want to extend Commissioner Hanley's and Treasurer O'Brien's regrets that they're not able to join us this evening. And we do have some checks here. And again, I, you know, without the support of our legislators, Congressman Lynch, Senator Bradley, Brady, I'm sorry, Bradley Brady, and also Representative Allison Sullivan. They've been a great support to us all the way and we greatly appreciate their continued support in also going out on all these presentations to the different towns that we've gone to, all 26 and all of their different districts. So yes, this evening, we are giving you a check for $171,116.39. To date, the town of Whitman has received 19 checks totaling $1,950,726.41. We also just brought in the test kits. So we were able to provide 10,620 COVID-19 rapid tests, which equals 5,310 kits and 59 cottons. I know that you people came down to Plymouth County and picked up the cottons, which we greatly appreciate. And it was a lot of work on, I'm not sure who came down, but we greatly appreciate their coming down and picking them up. Want to thank also the Town Administrator, Lincoln Hyman, and the Fire Chief for all that you have done in also, you know, getting these, all these checks able to get out to you faster for all the work that you and your staff have done. So I know Commissioner Valenzol has a lot to say, probably more, here's some comparison.
No, thankfully, my fantastic Chairman and colleague managed to cover most of it. I just also want to add our thanks to Selectmen Salvucci, who serves on our advisory board. You might be Dan, one of the longest-serving Plymouth County Advisory Board members in the whole county. For folks who don't know, Plymouth County Commissioners, we are the executive branch, much like, of course, you folks are for the town of Whitman. Your legislative branch is town meeting, our legislative branch is the advisory board. So we can't function or operate without them. We're very grateful for Dan's service to that body as well. I did pass this out just for you folks to get kind of a quick glimpse. We're very proud of this program. And whenever we have the opportunity to come before boards of selectmen, we really like to highlight just how successful the Plymouth County CARES program was. As you can see from the front, the cap that the town of Whitman had from Plymouth County, and I'm pretty certain you folks are going to hit that cap, so this won't be the last time we're here bringing you some money, was over 50% greater than similar-sized community outside of Plymouth County. And of course, the town of Whitman has my favorite comp, U R Comp to the town of Swanscott, which might sound familiar to folks, that is the hometown of the governor. Plymouth County delivered a million more dollars to Whitman than the town of Swanscott got. You've currently received about 81% of those funds, as Commissioner Wright said. One of the other parts that we're proud of, and a lot of credit goes to Treasurer O'Brien and his team. The Commissioners tasked him and his staff with executing this program with no extra help. So what we ensured by keeping our administrative costs low was that meant more money for Whitman and more money for Plymouth County. We are going to close this program out using less than 1% of these funds to administer the program to the city and towns of Plymouth County. The state, we're not really sure how much they spent. And of course, as you see on the back, the full comparison, Plymouth, the state capped comparable-sized communities in Plymouth County at $45 million. We tapped, capped similar-sized communities, we capped Plymouth County communities, I'm sorry, at just a shy hair under $90 million, $89 million. And if you go down the line, the one I always like to highlight, because I think it does tell a great story, is the city of Brockton was capped at $19.3 million. New Bedford was capped at $8.4 million. To date, New Bedford's only received 25% of that $8.4 million, so they've only received about $2 million. Brockton's received, I think we're at close to 100%. The only community in the Commonwealth that received more money than the city of Brockton was the city of Boston, and they got theirs directly from the federal government. Brockton got more than Worcester, Springfield, Lawrence Lowell, New Bedford. And of course, you go down the line, even another little town like Plimpton made out half a million dollars compared to Province Town 260. So it tells a fantastic story and we're very proud of this program. And of course, as Chairman Wright mentioned, this is the COVID test. So I can't understand enough just how quickly that was executed as well. We got a call December 29th, I think it was, informing us that there was an opportunity to buy these. We had COVID CARES Act money left there, a lot of communities that didn't get to their caps. We couldn't have thought of a better way to have used it. And Lincoln came down, I forget, was he a deputy chief that came with you? Yep.
And Fire Chief and Selectmen Evans.
That's right, Selectmen Evans, so I'm sorry. I did most of those that day.
You were 27.
Yes, they all ran together. But I do want to thank the Special Assistant to Treasurer O'Brien, Matt Hanley. He organized that entire day. I think, as you folks saw, you came in, you loaded up. And look, we're a lean operation at the county. I rolled up my sleeves and helped load them up. State Director for Senator Ed Markey, Jim Cantwell loaded them up. So Rep. Sullivan was helping as well. So just a good overall team effort, so.
All towns got the test kits too.
Oh, that's right, thank you. So another thing, and I'll end with this, and then we'll give you the money. And we also have another gift for you folks. Part of the reason why we're proud of the test kits as well is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, of course, arbitrarily and randomly gave test kits to some towns and not other towns. I'm from Rockland, Rockland got tests. I don't think Whitman did, did Whitman get tests? I'm going to say right. So it was sort of a random and arbitrary formula, as always with Plymouth County. The formula is population base in every community from Plimpton to Whitman and in every community in between was able to receive test kits. So we're very proud of that. And that is all we have, unless there's questions.
Sorry, I just can't breathe in these masks, so.
If I may?
Yes.
I can remember when we first came in and we had to make the decision whether or not the city of Brockton, city of Boston rather, the state was going to handle it or they were going to allow Plymouth County. And I know we had a couple of towns that were kind of lary wondering if it would be too big for us to handle. But with Tom O'Brien making his presentation seemed to convince the people that yes, we can get it done. And the fact that all the monies that came to Plymouth County went to Plymouth County, anything left over, if the state did it or Boston did it, it would end up with them. We wanted it to end up with Plymouth County to make sure it was all given out. And you've done an outstanding job. And it worked, and we were right. Even though we upset some people in the state, we proved them wrong. We proved right that Plymouth County was able to deal with the situation and handle it and handle it very professionally and cheaper, as you said. And it worked out fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Not only to that, but I believe since we have taken this on, we've now been recognized nationally for what and how we did it. They have contacted us and they've been very impressed in what we've done. And of course, I just can't say enough, it's really because of the support of legislators and all the town members who have really crossed the Ts and dropped the Is to make it, you know, get done faster and quicker and the amount of time in which, you know, they need to get back to the town. So we're very happy and, you know, very proud of that.
And I'll just add to Selectmen Salvucci, another thing that we made sure of, not only do we do it for less than 1%, but there were horror stories around the state. In the beginning, I think the state has since cleaned this up that if a community applied, the state would give them the money and then also give them the compliance and say, hey, by the way, check this and make sure we didn't screw up. And then when the state got around to doing their due diligence and realized that they may have screwed up, they clawed money back. To date, and we will close this program out, the checks we handed you and the checks we've handed you will be deposited, done and dusted. You'll never have to think about it again. I think it was the Malden or Methuen got over half a million dollars from the state and then about six months later, it was Methuen, thank you. Six months later, the state called and said, we screwed up, we need that money back. That has not happened once yet in Plymouth County. The state program was just very clunky and cumbersome to deal with. We're local, we're all friends and neighbors. We've lived in this county together for a long time. And I think it's a great success story for the successes of what Plymouth County did. And I'll just end with this last point with it. Plymouth County was so successful with the CARES Act, as Chairman Wright mentioned, we've been recognized nationally. But not only were we so successful locally, every single eligible county in Massachusetts for ARPA money, they took it. And they also asked us to help take the lead on programming it. And that's including Dukes County, which is Martha's Vineyard. So every eligible county took their funds this time. And we're here to hopefully keep the goodwill going.
Very good. Thank you very much. And it's probably appropriate at this time to take a picture of you.
Thank you.
Give him a check.
We have some.
Mary Beth is there, she's chomping at the jaw, drawing the money, right?
We also have one of the more fun traditions that the county has is the updated highway maps. Of course, with Google Maps now, these probably aren't as relevant as they used to be, but we just want to also present you with an updated highway map. I think it highlights the new 44 down in Plymouth and the updated Old Colley train lines as well.
Where do we hang that?
Maybe a living room, Dan.
I know.
Okay, so how I have to do this is the Tom O'Brien way. I have to give you the packets separately and I'll give you the check separate. So we'll take a picture with us giving you the check and then we will take a picture of just you holding the check and not us. So we know we got it to you.
We have four checks for five selectmen, so.
I was just going to say. Mary Beth should probably just take all of them.
Yeah, maybe Mary Beth takes them all.
We have some people here that have spent a lot of time working on this money.
Oh, they did. They really did, without them, we couldn't have done it.
We have our Health Director, Dan Kelly, Mary Beth Carter, the Treasurer, Ken Littell. Thank you very much, Ken. Ken, the accountant, Lincoln, of course. I think these people should probably be involved in passing the.
Absolutely.
I should add, Treasurer O'Brien did relate to just how much of a pleasure Lincoln and your entire team has been here. Some communities were a little more, I don't want to say difficult, but just not as smooth and easy to work with as Whitman has been. And he wanted me to convey his gratefulness to all of you folks for all the hard work that you do.
If I, Mr. Chairman, if I could also, Superintendent Simonak has joined us, which we really appreciate. And I know Deputy Police Chief Bombardier is here on Police Chief Hamlin's behalf. And I know Fire Chief Clancy wanted to be here, but is in another meeting tonight in the Finance Committee. So, but it's absolutely a huge team effort. You know, every person here has been key in providing all those services on behalf of the residents of Whitman, to the residents of Whitman for COVID-19. And especially, I want to call out Ken Littell, who's done the vast majority of the difficult paperwork. So thank you, Ken.
So should we go behind?
What are you doing in front of our great clock there?
Who's going to be taking the picture?
I did it here, I could get you guys in.
We don't need to be in the picture. People that did the work.
And also, in the very beginning, we gave out all the packs to the town and then the state wanted copies of all of these, so that we had to go back.
We sent half a million pieces of paper to the state.
Right, we had to go back and get all the packets and some of the town managers lost the packets, I didn't know where they were. So we do have copies of the packets, I don't worry, we're not going to come back to you and ask you. You, I guess it would be.
We found them.
So I'll give you the packets and.
Yeah, it'll just be easier if we fill in behind you.
Yes, they want us in.
Oh, yeah, we want you all, well.
Do we need to be in this picture?
Get in, Dan.
It was the dedicated we had.
I want you in there.
All right, Randy, get him out.
We'll show you around.
All right, guys, you ready? Everybody ready?
Yep.
Say Plymouth County.
Plymouth.
They won't see it because of the mask.
That's true.
One law, them holding the check and not us.
See, I usually cut this part of the O'Briens show out.
Ready?
Yep.
Here we go. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Now I'll give it to.
Make sure you collect them.
Mary Beth wants, she's saying, where's my check?
So happy to come in and see you guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Mary Beth, you got them all?
Wow, fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
No, our pleasure.
Appreciate it.
You have all the checks, Mary Beth?
I have four checks.
Great.
It has the paperwork that goes along with it and.
That's all that matters.
We'll get these in the bank.
Thank you, as always. Thank you, Sandy.
I know. Thank you, thanks, Ken. Folks.
Thank you, Mary Beth. It's a tough act to follow.
I know, really.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, that kind of cleared the room.
Something we said?
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is District Teacher Plan, and we have Ann Donna here to present the final plan. We've been looking at this version of it for a couple of weeks. People were invited to call you or respond to you if there was anything they needed changing. And from what I understand, nothing needed changing?
Not good.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was going to say, that's really, it's wonderful. I just, I want to just thank everyone and for the opportunity to work with you. And I, it was, what was impressive was the amount of sort of care and effort that everyone put into this. And the success of any strategic plan is that there's, that everyone's got their shoulder to the wheel. And through the process and the opportunity also to talk with the department heads, is that, that there is a, in order to achieve those results, I mean, a part of it is kind of keeping track of it. And I think that the goals or the strategic priorities that were developed by you all are realistic. And that I encourage you that on a, whatever that sequence is, whether it's quarterly or, you know, biannually, is to look and just see, how are we doing? Because, you know, what we don't want is for something that you've all put so much work into to sit on the shelf. And I think that the way the plan's been formulated by everyone, it's really a plan that can be shared with people. And, you know, to look back in five years and to say, gee, like, how did we do? So again, it was a real honor working with you all.
It was our pleasure to work with you too, Ann. It's an impressive document. We actually need to vote it, which we'll do now, vote to accept it formally. And then it will go up on our website. There will also be, I talked to Lincoln before the meeting, there'll also, people can come to Town Hall if they wish and ask for a copy of it. We'll produce a paper copy if that's what they would like to have. But by tomorrow, it will be out there. And we need to hold ourselves accountable and hopefully there will be people that will hold us accountable too as we check on this plan. I think a biannual check is probably a good idea. And it's just, it's been a long time coming. Ann, we have Citizen Kane in the audience, who is. Who deserves a lot of credit for putting our nose to the grindstone on a strategic plan. He understood the importance of it and we're seeing the fruit of that right now. And the ability to have worked with you was a pleasure. Anyone else have anything, any questions? Someone like to make a motion to accept the plan?
I make that motion to accept the plan, as written.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just thank Ann. You know, I think one of the most impressive parts was, I think there was a lot of trepidation by folks going into the retreat session and you made it work right off the bat. And it was surprisingly good and I couldn't believe the info that came out of it. It really, it did work out, so kudos on that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now official for 2022 to 2027.
I'll see you in 2027. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you, Ann.
Next item on the agenda is the Assistant Town Administrator Selection Process. It's, we've received, we've received some good advice on what needs to be done now. And that is to actually put this position out before, advertise it and go through another search process. Hopefully, one that will end with us actually having somebody in a position that we need. I've talked to a couple of you and have talked singly and have spoken to Lincoln. And I wonder if a good way for us to get into this process would be for us to think of a couple of things. Number one, putting out a similar job description to the ATA. But I also asked Lincoln to think about another position, a position that we could call Human Resources and Operations Director. Something like that. Someone who would take care of all the human resources responsibilities as well as procurement responsibilities, with a little grant writing on the side. But a job that's similar to the ATA job, but one that's, by its title, more focused. And I've asked him if he could research that over the next couple of weeks and with the pleasure of the board, if the board agrees, to research that over the next couple of weeks and present us with a couple of alternatives. A straight ATA, that's a very specific job description. And also, Human Resources and Operations Person. And see what happens with those two. See, we could then choose one and then get into the search process. You guys, all right with that? Does it sound okay?
We could possibly talk with surrounding towns that may have one or the other or both. Find out which is, you know, is it better to have one ATA and one Personnel Director? Or is it better to put them together? I think that we got to, what we decide, that when we go out to look for somebody, that it has to be very, very specific in what they're, they have, you know, they, we're offering as far as the scale has gone and what their, you know, job performance is about. So that we don't have somebody come back and say, well, I'd like this, this and this, or I can't do this, this and this. They know right up front what their responsibilities are when they apply for the job, so that we don't make eye out and have the issue charming.
So in, then our first week, first meeting in March, we'll go over this again and we'll have something to work on. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Next item on the agenda is the FY '23 Operating Budget. Lincoln?
Yes, so I mostly just wanted to make sure, you know, obviously, two weeks ago was sort of the kickoff season. Clearly, as the board knows, the Finance Committee is doing its review of the budget. Wanted to have it on the agenda so that the board of selectmen can continue its review of it. I'd also like to briefly mention a few items that we didn't get into a little bit more detail, that sort of nuances. We went through the broad strokes two weeks ago. And obviously, you know, happy to take any further questions, comments, thoughts on those since the board has had a longer period of time to digest it. A few smaller things that I just wanted to mention and point out, bring your attention to, that we hadn't discussed earlier two weeks ago. A couple savings things that I think are, you know, demonstrations of how we can succeed in certain areas and find some efficiencies so that the town does have the resources to go forward with some other pieces of what's been identified in the Madden Report, what's been now identified in the Strategic Plan, in our financial policies about, you know, to have the resources to pursue those things by finding some savings elsewhere. Two things I did want to point out on page 26 of your budget document. I've instructed and have been working with the Information Technology Director, Josh McNeil, to take a look globally at our telephone operations and figure out which phones, you do an audit to figure out which phones we may be able to have less expensive plans on, which phones we may be able to get rid of, landlines, because we don't need them anymore. So I think that's definitely going to find some savings. There's some savings represented here in this budget document, some projected savings. That's a conservative number. I expect that it may be more than that, but I wanted to point that out to the board. And then in addition, another piece of savings we have been operating for a while with a, an old company to do our ambulance billing on behalf of the town. And that, you know, I think it became clear that it was time to go out and find some efficiencies there and better service. So that was something I worked with, with Fire Chief Clancy, to go out, seek some bids, receive some bids, and we will now be paying less for that. Again, some of that savings is represented here. I think, I think we may be able to find more, but it is a conservative estimate in this document. And to, you know, and in addition, I think the service will be better through this change in vendors. So those were two items. So those were two items. The, the final savings piece I want to mention is streetlights. We've talked about this a little bit in the past. We've certainly seen some significant savings in moving over, in purchasing the streetlights and moving them over to LED. There is, again, conservatively, but there is a further reduction there, and again, I think we'll be able to see some further savings there as the years, as the years go by. So that's one other savings. Just a couple of the things that I, that are, that, again, I wanted to bring the board's attention to. On page one, on the town meetings and elections, you'll see a pretty large increase there that, as the board can probably expect, is because we have a midterm election this year. So that increases in, is in concert with similar increases in the past when we have midterm elections every four years as opposed to presidential elections or off years. One other item that I wanted to bring to your attention was the Reserve Fund. So I know, you know, traditionally, in Whitman, there have been frequent Reserve Fund transfers. I think one of the, one of the, a couple, several successes that I think we've seen with the consolidated budget that was implemented for the first time in this current fiscal year, is we've not had the need for a Reserve Fund transfer in the last year. I think that's a positive thing, that, you know, that Reserve Fund transfer amount sort of fluctuated in the years past. It's stayed constant in the proposed budget that you have before, before you at $35,000, but I do think that's another piece of the budget predictability that we've been talking about. And just, I think, a couple of the quick things, the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, has had a big increase in applications before it, so there is a modest increase in here with the expectation that that increase may continue. If you recall, at the special town meeting that we were, that we had part of in, on January 31st, there was a budget, an article that would have transferred more monies there for this current fiscal year, but with the expectation that that may continue in fiscal year 2023, there is a modest increase there. And globally, I think, just a couple of other things I want to mention was, you'll see some expense lines reduced by relatively, typically, mostly relatively nominal amounts, but decreased back down to what historical expenditures have also, have, have actually been. So that's sort of across the board in just about every department. Departments were, you know, in this proposed budget in order to get the balance, to get to that more predictable projected tax rate. Some expense lines have been, have been reduced to the historical. But then two other, I think, I think just three other things, quick things I want to mention, there's sort of smaller targeted investments that this projected budget would envision is, one, returning the visiting nurse line to what historically has been there. Those costs have been transferred in recent years to the CARES Act. The CARES Act is over, as we know, and, but restoring those monies so that those services can continue to be delivered to residents. The other thing is, that was actually in this fiscal year with increased monies for more bus services for seniors through the Council on Aging. That hasn't unfortunately really fully come to pass because we're still living in COVID. We were being optimistic and hoping not, but I did want to point that out, that there are additional funds there in fiscal year 2023. That's a continuation to attempt to continue to get back to the transportation program that we had had and actually do a modest increase. And then the final, the final thing I, I want to say, sort of smaller targeted investments, we were talking about the larger ones last time, but smaller target investments, there is a modest increase in the projection for aid to veterans and surviving spouses. We have a, you know, a Veteran Service Officer who's been in, on the job for a short time, but has been doing a great job in identifying other residents who may be eligible for services. The great consequence of that is that we do expect that we, there may be more payments. That's a great quote unquote problem to have, but I did want to point out that that was a modest increase. And as a reminder, we do get reimbursed 75% from the state for those, but we do need to make the initial outlay. So those were some of the sort of smaller pieces that we didn't go over in the broader, broader strokes last time. And, and obviously, we may want to, board may want to continue to have this on its agenda as it, as it goes forward.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, I, I met with Lincoln, and there's a few line items that I had questioned and why, you know, certain issues, and he explained them all. One question I have, final question, is the form that you gave us is not the final form. You're going to update them, because a lot of the times, you did not get a budget at the time, and you plugged in a budget, and then when you finally got it, you put it in under recommendation. Talking about like Sault Ste. Vautec. We haven't seen, have you, I don't even, I didn't notice if you plugged the budget in here for Whitman Hansen, because I don't think they had it when you gave us this.
They did not, and they continue, I, I wouldn't intend to put that in place until the school committee votes it.
Votes it in, exactly.
And so, you know, the superintendent made his presentation for what his request is. When this, when the school committee meets the statutory deadline and makes its budget request, certainly that number, I would suggest should go in there at that time. As you mentioned, the Sault Ste. Vautec, we didn't have that information, but that's been corrected now for what their actual request is. So, yeah.
Right, good. That way, you know, this is not, this is just an estimated one now, when we get the final one that goes to town meeting, it'll be updated.
Exactly.
And, you know, and I had a question, being Chair of the Finance Committee for like five years, we always had $50,000 in our Reserve Fund transfers, right? But as you pointed out, and you're absolutely right, that they haven't been using it because we've been running closer to the budget and controlling it, so we didn't really need it. So why tie it up?
Correct.
You know, and to be able to save a little bit money here and there, so it's a good move.
And I also want to give some credit where it's due there to, to the department heads. You know, the consolidated budget has allowed them to be the department managers that they are. So for example, I know, I think Mary Beth had mentioned to me that she would be bringing this up in her meeting with the Finance Committee about her budget this evening, is that the consolidated budget has allowed, she's had a staff member depart. Hopefully, we'll have someone in place relatively soon, but that the consolidated budget has allowed her to make the transfer, to allow for some nominal increases in overtime for existing staff so that the work can continue to happen without needing to go for a Reserve Fund transfer, because she has that, you know, limited and reasonable flexibility within her salaries line item to, to handle that.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Lincoln. Building Commissioner position.
Yes, so, as you know, you've had some discussion about this in the past. Obviously, there was an item that had been proposed, that town meeting was not able to address, that would have allowed for, you know, not created, but allowed for the possibility of a change in the building commissioner position. Wanted, the board had requested some more detailed information regarding comparatives positions, what similar, like communities do. It is, I, you know, I, I think the, the information does indicate that when our current building, part-time building commissioner retires on May 26th, I just received a formal date from him today, that when he retires formally on May 26th, that it would be, you know, the board may want to consider, and the town may want to consider having a full-time building commissioner. I think now is the time, seeing as how the position will be open. So I think, I would propose that we put together a new job description for that, but obviously, a critical piece of that is, is this a part-time position, or is this a full-time position going forward? The, the proposed, the fiscal year 23, 2023 budget that, that you have in front of you does include sufficient monies, in my hope and opinion, that would, that would cover that, in terms of when you look comparatively at what like communities pay a full-time building commissioner. One other piece that I would like this position to include, or possibly include, is some more professional support and advice for the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission. I've spoken with both Chair Gold Rosen from the Zoning Board of Appeals and George Porter, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, to both get their feedback on that. I think they were both excited about if that was a possibility, to have a full-time building commissioner, you know, inform their decisions a little bit more regarding, here is the law that governs your decision, here are the bylaws that govern your decision, both with respect to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission. You know, a lot of municipalities of our size have a conservation agent, they have a town planner. I don't think anytime soon that's something that the town wants to look at, but I do think, and the two chairs of those, those two, that board and that commission, seem to agree, that it would be worthwhile to consider having some professional assistance for them in their work. So I think this would allow for that, and I think it could be included in a full-time job description, if, when, when we post it.
Questions, comments?
Actually agree, because it's long overdue.
We agree.
We couldn't afford to pay Chair Gold Rosen or Porter what they would be worth to stay in those positions, and they volunteer their time, so I think giving them a little professional support is, is a great idea.
Makes good sense.
Just from me, if, obviously, it's part of a job description, I think zoning issues and code enforcement needs to be a big part of this. I think, I think we've definitely seen some issues even recently rearing their head, that unfortunately, a part-time Bob doesn't have enough time to get around to, to all these things, and, and those are quality of life issues at, at the end of the day. So if we were going to do this, I'd really look for somebody, you know, that was also focusing on some zoning and code enforcement issues.
Okay, so, so we'll be looking forward to a job description?
Yeah, a job description. It sounds like, it sounds like the board would like that, at least in the first draft, to be a full-time position, correct? Okay.
It's, it's in the budget, right?
It is, it, so it is, I hope, you know, sufficient monies, sufficient monies are there to attract a quality candidate in fiscal year 2023. It's not in the budget for, in fiscal year 2022, so I, I think, you know, with this feedback from the board, we want to go back and seek again at special town meeting in May, a transfer of funds to allow for the possibility of a full-time commissioner in, you know, in, in May to June. I, I think it would be great if there could be some overlap, since Bob is certainly a wealth of, of knowledge, but, you know, hopefully that's a possibility.
Because I know that when my daughter-in-law was on the planning board, she's an engineer, so there's a lot of issues that she recognized, and, and having a, somebody, a building inspector that knows a lot of the codes and things like that, like Bob did, but there's other issues that an engineer looks at that sometimes a building inspector doesn't look at, and one of the things is conservation areas that an engineer would look at. And so I think it would be very, very helpful for the town to move forward and, and get up to date with the, the right employee to get the job done in a most efficient way.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I guess this is going to be kind of backtracking to more general budget discussion, but going through the budgets, we do see some potential increases in staffing a couple of places. I certainly wouldn't want to get too far ahead if we, before a town meeting approves that, or before, you know, the budget actually shakes out a little bit more. I think, I think it's still early in the budget to, I guess, I don't want to be promising things and, and then, because I, I still stand by the fact that we need to produce a budget that is not using one-time money, which you've done, so it's a dangerous cliff to jump off of. We've worked hard to get away from using one-time funding sources, and I certainly don't plan on voting for anything that does.
I agree. Yeah? Good. But it doesn't hurt, I mean, look into it, see what is the cost effect, and if in fact, can the town afford to do A, B, C, and D?
And I think the FINCOM, obviously, they're going to make recommendations, should have the info too, so.
That makes sense. Okay. New business. Actor on the request of Don Byers on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council for permission to add two concerts to the summer concert series, which had concerts taking place on July 7th and July 14th. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second? This Don, Don is here, I think. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, these concerts for many years were
I can't wait for.
Wonderful things to have in the park, and through the COVID times, we've had a lot of people say they really miss them, and it really showed how badly people wanted to get it back out and into this fresh air and enjoy times in the community. So I'm, I'm thrilled that they're doing this whole program again, and, and I'm sure they're going to get a ton of people out there to go to these concerts. I'm fully supportive of them doing this.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor? Aye. Actor on the request of Don Byers on behalf of the Whitman Cultural Council for a three-day liquor license on Friday, April 21st through Sunday, April 23rd, for the annual Champagne Cake and Art Show, subject to receipt of liquor liability coverage and to waive the fee for said permit. And the ask direct is, it's a recommendation of the ABCC that local licensing authorities consider issuing one-day liquor licenses for three or four days in order to allow for proper delivery, storage, and disposal of all alcoholic beverages purchased, and that's, I, I understand that's why we're looking for a three-day liquor license.
It's always been that way, yes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I'm just glad to see that they're bringing this back. When we used to have the wine tasting, we had 200 people show up, and we used to do that for Friends of the Park, as far as a fundraiser, maybe if we're not doing that, maybe Cultural Council might want to consider doing one of those too down the line.
Okay.
You know, the townspeople love it.
You're listening, Don?
Okay. You know what I mean, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah?
Please.
And this particular event was another one that we had done in the past.
Oh, yeah.
The June Old Area was instrumental in, in that, and it was well-attended, and it's community events like this that really make a big difference, and to, to bring these things back is a wonderful idea.
Yeah, I agree. 100%.
Just, I guess, a clarification, the, the motion is to issue three one-day liquor licenses and not a three-day liquor license, which I don't believe exists?
No, it's three days, right?
It's a three, there is a three-day license?
So the, so the alcohol can be on the premises, that means that you're not selling it.
Well, I understand, but I, at least a couple of years ago, when Boston went through its beer garden boom, they were issuing 60 one-day liquor licenses to any individual vendor to cover the summer, rather than a 60-day liquor license. I just want to stay on the right side of the ABCC.
No, this is the way we've always done it.
Okay. That works for me.
Any further questions or comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we, you have your schedule and you, you have your liquor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll have to move it from the truck indoors, I don't drink.
Oh, well, it'll be legal liquors provided.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Recommended Marijuana Businesses' Bylaw.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Bylaw Study Committee has been meeting for a few months now, of which I'm a member, putting together a draft bylaw for, for town meetings consideration that would allow for both recreational and medical marijuana facilities in town. This past Wednesday, the full Bylaw Study Committee unanimously recommended what you have in your packet for a draft of that, of that bylaw. I can speak, if you would like, Mr. Chairman, to sort of the high level, what it would do. The process going forward is that, like any zoning bylaw, if it was to come before, if it, if it was to come before town meeting, it would need to be referred to the planning board by the Board of Selectmen, so that they may have a hearing and produce a report on the proposed zoning bylaw before town meeting. What this recommended draft bylaw would do is, again, allow for recreational, remove the ban on recreational and medical marijuana facilities in town. remove the ban on recreational and medical marijuana facilities in town. It would allow for no more than five establishments, marijuana establishments, either recreational or medical, of which no more than three would be able to be recreational marijuana retailers. It would also allow for other types of marijuana businesses outside retail. It would also allow for cultivation facilities, manufacturing facilities, et cetera. If those facilities were cosited with a retail facility, then under this bylaw, it would count as one license, one of the six, of which no more than three could be retail. If, again, if like a cultivation facility, for example, was cosited with a retail facility. This proposed bylaw would only allow these types of businesses in the highway business district, in the industrial district north of South Avenue. If the board wants, we do have a map, and I can show the specific areas for where that is. But in essence, it's most of the land on either side, most, but not all, of the land on either side of Route 18, and a little bit on, to the south of Route 14, west of Route 18, and then a small portion on Route 27. And then north of South Avenue, it's largely the area between Rayner Avenue and Hobart's Pond to the north of South Avenue. But again, if, I can show a map if folks want to see it. The, briefly, the marijuana facilities first would need to come to the board for a host in order to negotiate a host community agreement. That host community agreement would include how much, you know, the town would certainly want to seek, and we would negotiate that, to seek how much we would seek from the marijuana business in, in funds to address the impacts of marijuana. There is, in addition to that separately, a section of state law that we would want, we, the town, would want to adopt, a town meeting to adopt up to a 3% tax. So that's separate from whatever would be negotiated in the host community agreement. A prospective facility would take that host community agreement, once it is negotiated successfully with the Board of Selectmen, and go through site plan approval and a special permit process with the zoning board of appeals. Another couple pieces that I would mention is that the, the bylaw study committee wanted to put some language in here regarding signage, and being specific that signage wouldn't refer specifically to, you know, to marijuana lingo slang in its titling. And also would seek to address any kind of odors that would come from any type of business. So that is the high level of what this, of what this would do. And obviously happy to take any questions and go from there.
Mr. Chairman, I am also on that bylaw study committee, and we have been banging this around for quite a while now. And Lincoln has done incredible work on research and with our law department and Bob Curran. And I think when I first started getting into this, I was a little apprehensive. But I've come around to this because, based on the information that we've received on how much revenue the town is missing. And I liken it back to when we had the opportunity to add the extra sales tax for restaurants. And we all thought it wasn't going to amount to a lot and would maybe hurt restaurants, when in fact it didn't hurt the restaurants, and we did receive far more than we thought we were going to get. So I think that the folks that want this product, they're going to go, if we don't have it, they're going to go to one of our neighbors. They're going to go and they're going to buy it. So for us to change our bylaw to include this, we would be accessing that revenue that would go up, you know, all the communities. So I'm fully on board with this, and it was a unanimous vote by the, by the committee. And I think it would be in the best interest of Whitman if we push this along. And we would definitely see some revenue. And, you know, as the times are getting tougher and tougher, we can use every bit we can get.
If I may? By voting this, states recommend marijuana business bylaw, recommended business bylaw. By voting this, are we saying that the board is in favor of this, or we're in favor of this to go before town meeting?
Yeah, that's it, the latter.
Well, it goes to the planning board first.
Right, so if the board saw fit to do that, the board would need to refer it to the planning board for their review. And then in order for it to be on the town meeting warrant, the board would need to approve the warrant including it.
Because basically, anything that comes before us, if it has to go before town meeting, I would not vote against anything that has to go before town, before town meeting. I don't want to vote against something, only one vote. But I would vote for it to go before town meeting, but at town meeting, I'd probably vote against it. That's how I feel. I think we're just walking into an issue, allowing it, even though, as you say, other towns are going to be selling it, Whitman residents will be using it, but we will not be getting the benefits of it. Well, I have second thoughts on it, but I mean, I would vote in recommending for it to go to them and then go to town meeting, because I'm not going to speak for town meeting.
Yeah, actually, other towns are using it or are selling it already.
Yeah.
It's not that they're about to, they are. And it's legal to do so.
And our residents are.
So I'd be in favor, I'd accept the motion to approve this being sent to the planning board. And hopefully we'll get it back.
I will make that motion.
A second.
Yes.
Just for this, I'm all in, absolutely all in favor of this. I think, and I was, I think I had just gotten on the board when it got turned down. And I think, I understand the intention of the board at that time. It was so relatively new and, but now it's, like you said, Brian, it's in all our surrounding communities, and at this point, we're just losing money. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. I would just like to say, think on our behalf, that if we vote this this evening, that a draft copy should hit the website immediately, because I think this is going to come out in the paper and definitely get skewed. And I would just like a draft of exactly what it is for the public to be able to see it relatively quickly.
Yeah, as long, as long as it's labeled not as fait accompli, but there are still some steps to go through.
Right, info-only, a big draft watermark across it.
Absolutely.
And I liken this to, you know, I respect Dan's opinion on this, and I liken it to, we have many liquor establishments, be it package stores or restaurants that sell alcohol. That's not saying that we're promoting alcohol, we're just, we license it. And it's up to the citizens whether they want it or not. It's free life. So we are looking for revenue for the town, and it's up to townspeople whether they want to partake in it or not. So it's not like we're forcing it one way or the other.
On the other hand, now it's going in, you hear in the news that they're looking to legalize establishments to have, like, smoking rooms. You know, like you have a bar for alcohol, right? It's the bartender that makes a decision to shut somebody off or not, right? But, you know, some people that don't normally smoke marijuana, one cigarette may do it. Right, so how do you, you know, so I mean, what you're doing is, are we opening the door for them to start having smoking parlors?
I don't believe that that is in this bylaw.
So smoking parlors would not be allowed under this bylaw?
By this bylaw, but that's the next step. If you allow, you allow step one, step two is not too far behind, in my opinion.
Right, but once again, it would go before the town for them to decide. That's the only thing.
Yes, Justin?
I may as well just add in.
I'm going to step in between these, 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 these larring right-wingers here.
Also, I also think this is a great idea. I think the town may have been a little too hasty a couple of years ago prohibiting this. You know, Rockland has at least two establishments open, Abington's licensed four, Brockton has a dozen. Hanson is considering a similar bylaw for their main town meeting. Yeah. Pretty nice.
I just had it.
You've seen artist renditions, right?
Doing my research, Dan.
Is there any, any further comments that are going to add to the conversation? Hearing, all is in favor?
Aye. At the town meeting.
Good. Discuss a joint meeting with the Hanson Board of Selectmen.
Yes, so there's been some discussion about whether or not a joint meeting with the Hanson Board of Selectmen might be a good idea, especially in the context of the school budget. And, you know, coordinating or not, you know, the possibility of coordinating what the towns would like the assessment to be. Obviously, it's the school committee under the statute that will make a, that will vote to actually have a request that produces the assessments for each town. But there have been some discussions about that, wanted to see how the full board felt. Chairman Kowalski had suggested that a Zoom meeting might make sense on March 8th for a joint meeting with the board. Obviously, we want to get a take from the full board about that. And tentatively, it does sound as if that, if it works for the board here, that that would tentatively work for the board in Hanson.
If I may, this joint meeting is just to discuss where we're looking to go as far as the high school budget, the regional budget, has nothing to do with deregionalization or whatever they're trying to do, because I don't want to get into that, because we're not looking at that, they were.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that the, that the agenda could simply read fiscal year 2023, Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, budget, period. But the agenda could be whatever the board would like it to be, but, you know.
We've done that in the past, way back when, had a joint meeting, a long time ago, when I was on the, on the Finance Committee, met with the school departments in both Whitman and Hanson, and we discussed the budget and where they were going with it. So we've done that in the past, so it might be not a bad idea.
If it is set up, I think we'd certainly probably want to invite Superintendent Simonak. You know, obviously, at that point, the school's current schedule is that the school committee would be voting, or is predicted to vote, a budget request for fiscal year 2023 on March 16th. So it does not appear that the schools would have an official request from the school committee at that point.
What was the proposed date?
Uh, March 8th.
And if it's a productive meeting, it could give the, the school administration and the school committee some valuable information before they finalize their budget request, their assessment request. So we'll set it up as Zoomer on, on March, March 8th. There has been some talk about having it at the, we couldn't have it at the high school, but we could, so there was some suggestion that we travel to Camp Kawani. I just thought a Zoomer might be, might be more, more civilized, going to camp.
I don't know if Camp Kawani is set up for cable.
Yeah.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
I mean.
I didn't mean that Camp Kawani was uncivilized, I just, sounded like going to camp was odd.
You know, their meeting room or our meeting room, it's.
Or the auditorium.
They're both set up. All right, town hall, you know.
Zoom it. Zoom it, that way you can have it in your basement. Be a meeting in your basement, or in your attic.
It's not an attic. And then we can get Dan's cat.
My daughter's bedroom, when she's.
Then I have my cat walk back and forth in front of the screen.
Well, anyway, we're obviously open to a meeting.
Right.
The details will come later. Removal of inter-municipal primary fire department dispatch system agreement renewal.
Yes, so as the board knows, we have fire dispatch services from the town of Holbrook through their regional dispatch center. There is, we need a new inter-ministerial agreement with them, since it expires on June 30th. You have in your packet what is proposed. I think the, the most relevant piece of information here is that it would vision a 3% increase in each fiscal year, from fiscal year 2022 to 2023 and so forth, 23 to 24, 24 to 25 in each year. It is, each town that is a member of the regional dispatch is receiving the same percent increase, so we're not being singled out at all. And so the board, if it saw fit, would just need to approve the municipal agreement, and then I can sign it on the board's behalf if you do approve it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
Just, I know we had a pretty big increase from Holbrook. Now, was that because they had built, built the facility?
So, yes, so they built a new facility.
Okay, that was last year, last year, year before, we had that pretty big hit.
Yeah, they, that facility is done now. I think it's been done about a year now, maybe a little slightly less than a year. So, yeah.
Do we know what 3% is roughly?
Yes, it is. So in fiscal, let's see. In fiscal '23, it would be $87,550. And then in, in fiscal '24, $90,076. So approximately $2,500, approximately increase. And then $92,881 in fiscal year 2025. So approximately a $2,700 increase, approximately.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's, are we, I know we're talking about an agreement, there's not an opportunity for us to price shop with like Duxbury's Regional Dispatch, or is there?
Not really. You know, certainly had the conversation with them about, about this. I think under the circumstances, it's relatively reasonable. We, this, we receive a better price for service, absolutely, than we would if we went somewhere else, even setting aside the change costs, which would be significant in terms of interoperability and all of that. Yeah.
Anyone else, is there a motion to, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All is in favor of the renewal? Set March meeting schedule? So if we're going to have a meeting with the Hanson people on the 8th, when would you like to have our regular meetings in March?
Just to let you know, the 22nd, Sultro Votec meets with the Finance Committee at 7:15. On the 22nd, so I may have to leave over there and then come back if we decide to have it on the 22nd.
What about, let's see, we're meeting, we're meeting, what if we meet on the, the 1st of March and the 15th of March as a, as a board? And then we can, and that, that meeting will be sandwiched on the 8th, the Zoom meeting.
So we'll meet three times that month?
Yeah, we do.
The 8th and the 15th.
Right. Is that okay?
There is, for March 1st, the board will very likely want to have an executive session to continue a past matter. And Town Council should be there, and she suggested she was available at 6:30 on March 1st.
Good, okay. Okay, so our, our normal meetings will be on March 1st and March 15th. March 1st, it'll start at 6:30. And.
6:30?
And the meeting with, and then we'll have the meeting on the 8th. You'll set up the Zoom meeting on the 8th, 7 o'clock, I guess. 7 o'clock, I guess.
And then the 15th.
Okay.
Hanson's board may meet at 6 or 6:30, but.
Pardon me?
They meet at 6.
Oh, Hanson does?
Yeah.
Why don't we meet, why don't we meet at 6 then, 6 on the 15th?
The 8th.
The, the 8th, I'm sorry.
So 6:30 on the 1st, 6 on the 8th, and 7 on the 15th?
Yeah. I know, I know this is taxing my mind. I don't know about you guys.
So we're meeting three times.
Your toes, Lloyd.
We're meeting three times, right? Okay, good. But all at different times. All right. This, this new business is over. Now we go to the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, so first item, COVID-19. As the board knows from the great updates from Chief Clancy, we have had, we did have a little bit of an uptick this past week through Thursday in positivity, but overall, over the last few weeks, we've had a decrease in positivity from our height during the Omicron, than the height of the Omicron variant. And we do have fewer cases, just higher positivity. But there are, in fact, fewer cases through this past Thursday, in, in the week, this, through this past Thursday. We have not, the booster clinics, the, as the board knows, the one booster clinic was canceled due to lack of interest. So at this moment, we're not intending to have any further Moderna booster clinics. If there is guidance on a, you know, a further booster that's recommended from the CDC, we'll reevaluate at that time as to whether or not we would want to use American Rescue Plan Act monies to, to have that booster clinic. The other, the other piece is regarding the test kits. So as Commissioner Valenzola mentioned, we received the 5,5,310 test kits from the county. We've distributed some so far. Chief Clancy and I have been talking about and have pretty much finalized, as long as it's okay with the board, a plan to distribute the remaining test kits that we have, a couple, in a couple ways. One, making sure that every employee has at least two test kits to be distributed through department heads. Some employees have not received them yet, especially if they're not residents, for example. Further, to have one more, to have one more drive-through event, to have test kits available, likely on the weekend of February 26th, but that's being worked through with police and fire and the school department about when we can have the middle school available for that. Thirdly, to Selectmen Evans had a great idea about reaching out to the 19 early childhood and care facilities in town, which have not received test kits, unlike, unlike elementary and secondary education, public schools, they have not received test kits from the state. So today, Dina Motto did some great work in, from the Health Department in reaching out. She's reached 10 of them so far and is reaching out to all 19. And so far, we have about 250 test kits that we'd recommend to go out through there and making sure that all students and teachers in each of those facilities has the opportunity to have two test kits each. And then finally, for the remainder of our, you know, it's now slightly more than 5,000 test kits that we have on hand now, we just intend to have a nominal number out and just out on a table for folks, you know, for whomever wants them, to take them at Town Hall, the library, and the senior center. We'll see, you know, if that sort of meets, having them away. We do, we, we do intend to keep some in reserve through, until the beginning of March, and then a further amount until the beginning of June to make sure that if there is some other further variant, that we at least have some on hand, so we don't hopefully have that situation again where we're scrambling to get test kits. So we do want to keep some in reserve for that possibility. But that's the plan. You know, obviously, help, happy to take any feedback. I know Chief Clancy and I are both happy to take any feedback on that plan, but I think we have a solid plan to distribute the test kits. As far as we'll be, whether or not we'll be able to distribute them all, if there's a desire, we'll find out. I think especially in putting out a nominal number each day at the buildings, we'll find out, right? So that's that. And then I did want to mention that, obviously, it's been in the news a little bit. Actually, Chief Clancy, I think at 5:30 or so, there was further guidance that came out from the Department of Public Health. I think we're still sort of digesting that, but it would appear that the guidance from the Department of Public Health, while they don't say that you shouldn't wear a mask, they do say that masks are, and I'm quoting here, "A fully vaccinated, a fully vaccinated individual should wear a mask indoors if you have a weakened immune system or if you are at increased risk for severe disease because of your age or an underlying medical condition, or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system, is at increased risk of severe, for severe disease or is unvaccinated." So that's a change from the DPH's prior guidance. It doesn't appear, though, CDC has changed their guidance at all, but that's just late breaking regarding mask requirements. Two final things about, well, one final thing about masks is that the, as I'm sure probably you saw in the news, that the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education rescinded the mask mandate in elementary and secondary public schools. And so that will end on February 28th. And I know in speaking with Superintendent Simonak, and actually, the school committee voted last week to not, to have a, to not have a mask mandate passed, the DESI mask mandate passed February 28th. So that's the COVID-19 update from me.
Any questions?
Since that recent information, I was planning on asking about this anyway, about when the governor had his press conference about February 28th. And as everybody here tonight knows, that we're roasting while we're wearing these. But I might suggest to this board that we follow that same date guideline to go with our recommended mask rather than a mandatory mask for town buildings. It's something that I would like to see, but it's obviously a pleasure of the board.
The Board of Health is meeting when?
Board of Health is meeting next on Tuesday, a week from today.
Which was, which is?
February 22nd.
The 22nd. I'd be, I'd be perfectly happy to wait until our, our own Board of Health takes, takes a, reacts to, to all this information. We've been kind of religious about trying to follow what our Board of Health recommends to us. And they're meeting on the 22nd, so it would make sense to me to, it would make sense to me to just keep things the way they are until then.
Yeah, if, maybe we could, on the, when we meet on the 1st, we could revisit that one question. Because they're gonna.
Well, yeah, we'll have information from the, from our Board, we'll have a recommendation from our Board of Health at that time.
That's okay.
Yes.
So could we give permission? If they opt to come out of masks on the 22nd, rather than wait another week? Could we give permission to follow their guideline at that point from their meeting? And we take it back up on the 1st? Just a thought. I don't know if it needs a vote, but.
I mean, it's happening, it's happening everywhere and not just countrywide, but actually, there's a lot of them happening every day in, in, in the local news. You're hearing about this particular community, that particular, it's really going, you know.
The 28th is a day for the schools, right?
Right.
Correct.
They're on vacation, they come back.
Yeah, they're on vacation the 22nd.
They're on vacation the week of, yeah, that's.
That's the first day they're back from vacation, yeah.
I don't know, what do, what do you people think?
I was just rereading, I got the same DPH update from HRD today regarding the office I'm going to tomorrow, that effective today, the guidance has changed. So they, DPH went immediate on it.
Support feel comfortable going with what the Board of Health has to say on the 22nd?
That's all I think.
I mean, they get their guidance from the DPH, right?
Yeah, usually.
But they can, but they can also do what they want to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They could, they could say, they could extend it to May.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of.
Well, we can look at, we can look at it.
And we meet March 1st.
We meet March 1st.
But if they, if they, if they choose to, to relax it on, on, on the 22nd, they have our weakened an odd to say that's okay. You want to make it a.
I, I'll make a motion that if the board would follow Board of Health guidelines at their meeting on February 22nd, until we could review it again at our March 1st meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Clarify that with, with regards to masking.
With regards to masking.
Never know.
Okay, everyone understand the motion?
Yeah.
Any discussion? I don't hear any. All those in favor?
Just to be.
Howdy, Tim.
Just to be, just to be clear, if the, if the Board of Health votes to recommend immediately or on some future date to no longer have mask mandatory in public buildings, we'll implement that immediately and then obviously have COVID-19 update again on, on March 1st. The March 1st meeting, and then the board, this board could put in, could do whatever it wanted at that time. But in the interim, if they recommend that the mask mandate be over for one week, just to be clear, we would not have a mask mandate in town buildings. Just, okay, got it, thank you.
If that week means that much to them before it ends.
Okay, that was cool. Schools audit?
Yes, so the board recalls, unfortunately, we, despite pretty heavy efforts to try and receive some bids, we did not, we, Whitman and Hanson, did not receive any bids for the schools' operational district, operational comparative audit. Randy, the liaison to that project from us, Laura Fitzgerald Kemmett, the liaison from the Hanson Board of Selectmen and the Hanson Town Administrator Lisa Green, and I met to talk about the steps forward. We agreed that we thought it would be a good idea to reissue with a longer period, to have it out on the street until March 11th. And again, try and receive some other bids and seek bids from wherever we can during that period. And then to have a longer performance period so that a final document wouldn't be due until October 17th of this year, to give potential bidders a longer period. And hopefully during the summer, when auditors are typically a little bit less busy, to hopefully get some interest from them so that they could have some time to work on it in the summer. So that's where we're at with that.
Just a question?
Yes, sir.
Are we not getting any bids?
None.
Maybe because it's tax season and they may be too busy doing that?
What we heard universally, so I called up several, a lot of CPA firms that typically do public work to try and get them to bid, and all of them said, "We are so busy with, with auditing CARES Act and American Rescue Plan. I'd be interested in it, but I don't do, simply do not have the time right now." So.
WMS project?
Yes, so.
Want to take that?
Yeah, go for it.
Meeting today, basically, good news that Colliers has been accepted. Their contract has been taken care of, and we are moving forward to putting out requests for design services. You'll see that in the paper in about a week. At which time, during this meeting, three members of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee were chosen to be part of the Design Selection Committee. It is the superintendent by, I guess, statute. Lincoln is our CFO, and Beth Stafford are the three members subset of the Middle School Building Committee that will be on the Design Selection Committee. So that's where we're at right now. We will not meet again till April 5th, and we'll be basically taking in the designers.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question for Andy. All right, so I'm, again, I'm gonna ask the same question. If they come up with a design that is a little bit over and above what we really expected, it's the state that makes the decision, right?
It, it's kind of a two-part answer. Ultimately, MSBA is gonna tell you what they're gonna give you funding for. As, as far as I know, we are going to receive multiple options and the, you know, ranging from remodel to new building. And it will be the Middle School Building Committee that ultimately makes that decision, what is being put forward. Now, if that's something MSBA does not agree with, that's when you could see a difference or if the Middle School Building Committee should decide to add things that aren't covered by MSBA, then ultimately, to take their funding, yes, they, they have a lot of say, but they're not gonna tell you it's definitely gonna be a new building or a remodel. It's obviously, it's efficiency at that point, a cost efficiency for the state.
When you finally come with a final design, you have to go before town meeting. So like anything else, you have to come before town meeting with something that they will agree with. You know, it may not be the Mercedes, it may not be the Cadillac, and it may not be the Ford. You know what I mean? You want something in between, so.
I, I would like to say that I do think town meeting probably should be the ultimate decider of where it goes, but it's gonna be the Middle School Building Committee that.
For the presentation, what you're gonna put forward.
We'll give, we'll give the option to the voters. Obviously, the voters will have the ultimate say whether or not they're gonna pay for it, exactly what project they're gonna get.
But that's the decision of the building committee to look at something, get a shot at it.
And I will say that there is a very good makeup of that committee that is looking at the educational plan and a large number of members that are cost efficiency and what it's gonna cost. And, and I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll come to consensus on the best project. It may not meet everyone's needs, it may be a little bit more expensive than some people believe, but I think the membership of that committee definitely is, is diverse enough that everyone is gonna, interests are represented. How was that for a?
Nailed it.
Anyone else have a question about Randy? A mold abatement at the Whitman Middle School?
Yes, so I had some, the school superintendent reached out to me about an issue with mold at the middle school. If the board recalls, this had been an issue back several years, approximately five years ago. The, the schools did go out and do some immediate remediation work, testing and remediation work to remove the black mold in the gymnasium area. They, there was, there was a request from the schools that the town have a special town meeting article to fund that $54,000. And again, it's $54,003. The, the conversation I had with the school superintendent was that, in, in my humble opinion, I, I do not think this necessarily should be a capital expense to come before town meeting in an, in a capital article. The reason being is that, so the, a little bit of brief background, I think, as, as the board knows, the regional school district says that capital expenses in one of our Town of Whitman buildings is the town's responsibility. But this regional school district agreement doesn't define what capital is. We, however, the town, the town meeting has defined what a capital item is, and the financial policies you folks recently adopted also, you know, reiterates what town meeting has decided, which is an item of. decided, which is an item of expenses that, of equipment or real property costing $20,000 or more, and having a useful life in excess of five years. So I wanted to bring it to the board because I don't think this meets that definition. That is to say, the mold cleanup is not, in my opinion, have a useful life of more than five years, and therefore, all things being equal, this is an operating expense that under the school, regional school district agreement, is a responsibility for the school district, not the town. But I wanted to get any feedback if, you know, the board feels differently, but under this scenario, currently, I wouldn't propose that on a draft town meeting warrant, a special town meeting in May, that there be an article for this $54,003 to fund this abatement, so.
Also, by the regional agreement, haven't we spelled, isn't it spelled out exactly when they have to come to us for, it is a dollar figure, and this greatly exceeds it, where they should have gotten permission from us to-
Give $5,000 in the regional agreement, because that was an issue when we were developing what our capital definition was for the town.
I agree with Lincoln on this, I mean, it's, it sounds like a maintenance issue to me. It's a costly one, and maybe we need to talk about whether or not we're going to fund it, but it certainly isn't a capital expense.
So, and, you know, understandably, and I mean, you can predict this, you know, that a friendly conversation about it, Superintendent and I, and his, and his response was, you know, I think it's going to be difficult to ask Hanson to pay 40% of this cost, understandably, but that was his response to that, so, anyway.
May I?
Yes.
Okay, mold doesn't happen overnight. I think it's a maintenance issue, and I think they have E and D money to take care of a situation like this, if it's in the best interest of the pupils, but just goes to show you that when, you know, if you've got a leak or something like that, for them not to know that that's happening and that mold will come down the line, is really, it's on them. And I think that if there's an issue, it's not a capital item, it's a maintenance item, and if they need to repair it or clean up the mold, they have the E and D account for emergency, things like that. It would be just like if in fact we had an issue with Town Hall or something, a tile came off the roof and we have to replace something, you get it done before mold starts. And this is on them. This is on the maintenance issue of that school. And I'm just so frustrated on having buildings, school buildings falling apart, when it should be, you know, it's a, it's a maintenance issue. They should be watching and looking for things like that, that's what they get paid to do, the maintenance departments. I mean, I don't know, I don't want to go there. I'm frustrated. I mean, because I look at Sashaw-Votec, and how we look at, we go, we go after that stuff and fix it immediately, right, so that, you know, our building isn't falling apart, we take care of it, not just close our eyes to it and let the eight towns repair it.
And what I guess my issue with the whole 40% thing from Hanson is, E and D seems to, especially in this year's budget, seems to be for just their projects and things they want to do. I mean, if it's technically for emergencies and deficiency, then it should be covered under this.
Right, this is an emergency.
That being said, it is a town building, and-
We're the landlords.
And we are the landlords, right.
So we fire the maintenance crew?
Well, it's their maintenance crew though, right?
That's right.
So we can't really fire their maintenance crew.
So it's on them?
I can't disagree with you, Dan.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's our money that we're paying with anyway. So it-
Well, 60% of it is our money, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, true, E and D, whatever they have, it's our money, yeah.
So what I was just thinking, when you brought that up like that, and what he said about Hanson, not thrilled about it, if it were reversed and one of their schools had the same problem, I don't think any of us would have any problem-
Using E and D money?
Doing the same thing. But as, you know, some of us have been around long enough to know that that school was built on a swamp. It's still wet down there. I mean, when, I was in that school the first year it opened, and you could barely go outside because it was so soft and mushy, and it's just built on a swamp. And mold is bound to happen, but I agree with you, it's a maintenance issue, it's definitely not a capital issue, and they should fix it. And if it happened in one of the schools in Hanson, same thing should happen.
Do you know where the mold is? Is it in the roof or is it in the cellar?
Gymnasium roof.
There you go. Gymnasium roof isn't mushy on a swamp, it's from rain.
Well, if you remember, the school where the police station, and you, I know you know this, the school that was there before where the police station is, you remember the gymnasium floor?
Right.
That was built on a creek, and the basketball court was buckled up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
I don't, I don't even remember that, but it was, it was nasty. And sometimes there'd be river running right down the gymnasium floor, so-
They had, they had a really massive mold problem at our old school.
Yeah.
Probably took it down, right.
Yeah, and, you know, they, I think they need to mitigate it.
At the time, it was a K-3A system, it was our school, it was our maintenance people that-
Right.
Neglected it.
Yeah, but that was the gymnasium floor that was built on the ground, we're talking about roof. There isn't a lake that's high enough to be in the roof.
I'm not sure we have to labor this point. I think the board's, the board is in favor of Lincoln stand on this at the, now, right now. Yeah, correct?
Thank you.
SSVT teachers' contract?
I just want to mention this briefly, Selectman Salvucci, as the board knows, is a member of the Sashaw-Votec School Committee. I, through the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, when there is a contract negotiations going on in a regional school district, the town administrator, town managers get together and choose one of our own to be the representative for management on behalf of the towns with the, as the regional school district does the contract negotiations. I was actually that person before I started in Whitman, so this is the, from Hanover. So this was the close of that process. I know it was a difficult contract negotiations for quite a while, just wanted to, you know, let sort of the full board know, in case you hadn't heard, that the Sashaw-Votec did come to agreement with its teachers' union for a three-year contract, beginning in this current fiscal year 2022, going into fiscal year 2024. It does have, just for context, it does have COLA increases of 2.25%, 2.5%, and 2.5%, but I know Superintendent Hickey was telling me that with the changes in steps, that the average increase year-over-year is actually about 4% to 5% for the teachers.
For three years, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, anyway, just wanted to mention to the board that that process had concluded with Selectman Salvucci, myself both, and that's where that contract ended up as a comparison point, so.
Okay, right from there to stormwater management?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know Selectman Evans had a question about stormwater management, the specifics about that and the budget. I've requested Superintendent Bruce Martin, and he would like environmental partners, the DPW's engineers, contracted engineers, to come in if the board wants to, and have a brief presentation on what the $85,000 in the proposed balanced budget would do, so I just wanted to let the board know that I've requested that, and they're finding some dates.
And the library director position?
Again, just FYI, so the board of, so the, as the board knows, the library director, Marcy Walsh-O'Connor resigned. The Board of Library Trustees appointed the Assistant Director David Aronson as the interim director, while a search is ongoing for a permanent library director. Been working closely with Sue Durand, the Chair of the Board of Library Trustees, to work through what a job description looks like, a posting, et cetera. That posting is out there, she and I worked on it, and that posting is out there at, on Masters of Library Sciences schools, websites, and, you know, in their career development folks, and also on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. The position does require a Master of Library Sciences, and the position, we've received a few applications, but it is scheduled now to close on March 11th, and then we'd have a process, and certainly I'll be involved, I intend to be involved in some way with the interview process, and then the decision would ultimately be made by the Board of Library Trustees.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, with Lincoln? If not, we need to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law C30A, Section 21A, Exemption 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public party. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Tell them a second.
They're a second.
Yes.
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 And we will be coming back into open session only to adjourn.